For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, October 19th, 2015. Call the order, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Waldora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had the opportunity to read the minutes from special session October 1st, 2015, which was IG, and regular session October 5th, 2015. Any changes, amendments issued? Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes max to address their concerns with council. This is the only time you're allowed to address your concerns tonight with the exception of the public hearing we will have on the Thunder Bay Chrysler Jeep Expansion Project and Truck Route Proposal. So any other topics, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Joseph Barchuk, address 2175 Hobbs Drive, Alpena, Michigan. So just want to thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to come and speak today. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Northeast Michigan Association for Cinematic Arts with my fellow committee members. I have Laura Boischewicz, George Ralston, and Kristy Witt there. Also Amanda Augustin is on our team, but she couldn't make it today. As you may recall, last spring, the City Council approved a vote to allow us to use the van shell on Fridays in the summer in order to host a number of free, open-to-the-public outdoor movie events. We're here today to offer our thanks and gratitude to the City of Alpena and the City Council for helping to make these events, which we dubbed "Summer Movies by the Bay", a great success. The summer, the summer of 2015, we raised over two grand from local businesses and individuals that supported our idea. With the money raised, we were able to purchase the materials to construct our own production screen and to pay for the legally required public performance rights for three films. All three films were very well attended, beyond even our expectations. There were at least 100 in the audience on average, and we received very good feedback about all the events as well. I'd like to thank the council members, Sean Sexton for his help and support getting this idea off the ground, and Cindy Johnson for offering us guidance along the way. We'd also like to thank Sean McNamara and the DPW for their help and guidance as far as our plan to mount and tie up the screen safely in the van shell and keeping the bathrooms open and available during the screenings. And also, City Engineer Rich Solinger for his help as well. We couldn't have put on such a great event without the help of those mentioned, as well as the countless other friends and family members that offered their hands to make this happen. When you think about it, we really pulled off something amazing in just a few short months. These screenings have always been, since their inception, about involving the community and putting something fun, entertaining, and different on for the City of Alpena. Everything right down to the sewing and grommeting of our screen by Maurice Fabrics and Valley's Docside Canvas, to the welding of spare frame parts that my grandpa was able to procure from one of the local businesses here, and the free advertising from WATZ. As you can see, this couldn't have happened without the friendly and willing participants from our lovely community, so just wanted to thank them again. This year, we had huge success with our three screenings. Like I said, we had over 100 in the audience on average, and that was with very minimal advertising. We had popcorn and hot dogs and ice cream for sale. And next year, we're planning to have an even bigger success. We'd love to start showing films at the beginning of summer around Memorial Day all the way through until around Labor Day. We plan to show them, if all works out, every other weekend for a total of around eight outdoor movies. We plan to involve the community more, having a viewer's choice film showing. We plan to host some events before the screenings, and on top of that, since these film screenings are really about the community, we want to give back as well and plan on partnering with other local organizations such as VBA, Drives, and Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary, or I've talked with them as well. And then also looking to the future, NEMACA really wants to expand and put on some events outside of the "Summer Movies by the Bay," showing lesser available films, whether it's documentaries, foreign classics, independent films, in order to expand what's available in the area. We're in the process of becoming a nonprofit, and we'd love to be able to host a number of educational and culturally relevant events as well, and perhaps even some classes. It's just looking to the future. So as you can see, we've got big plans, and it all started with an idea. So once again, thank you so much, and thanks to everyone, including those who came out to watch the movies and support our endeavor. We look forward to doing more in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Joseph. On the consent agenda this evening, A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $340,914.57. B is two council reappointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term expiring October 1st, 2018 against Elwood Anderson and Mike Lamble. C is rescind Council Policy Number 15, Alpena Civic and Convention Center. D is amended local government support of an application by GNL LLC doing businesses, Petri's, buying food for a new Class C liquor license.
May we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Presentations this evening, we have a recognition of firefighter/paramedic Jeremiah Mieschek.
Jeremiah, come on up, please. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. We have yet another recommendation or recognition tonight for life-saving. On September 19th, firefighter/paramedic Jeremiah Mieschek, who just passed his one-year probation a couple of weeks ago, was camping in Gladwin when he was approached by another camper to check on a friend nearby. He found a 55-year-old man slipping into cardiac arrest. He began CPR and continued basic life support care for 30 minutes before local EMS arrived. He then assisted the responding paramedics in stabilizing the patient and packaging him for transport. Their efforts were successful. The patient was transported to the small hospital in Gladwin and subsequently transferred to Midland where he underwent surgery. Unfortunately, after returning to his room, he suffered a second heart attack and later died. The fact that Jeremiah maintained quality CPR for 30 minutes is exceptional. The latest American Heart Association requirements as far as rate and tempo puts those compressions between 100 and 120 per minute, which is very, very hard to maintain for two or three minutes, much less 30. But it's that quality CPR that results in better success rates, and we certainly saw it in this case. This kind of dedication, skill, and willingness is to help is a common trait among our Alpena firefighter/paramedics, and one that Jeremiah has certainly demonstrated that Saturday afternoon. So it's with great pleasure, Mayor, if you'd step forward, that I'd like to present this life-saving merit commendation issued by authority of the chief and the mayor to our newest full, non-provocationary firefighter, Jeremiah Mieschek.
That's all you had to do.
Jeremiah, a true testament, again, along with Jim from last month, of what you've ever capable of, willing to go off duty. And probably the wrong term, as I'm told that you're never off duty, so it's probably a moment for us, or me to see that. Great to meet you. Great to have you here.
There aren't many people who get a life-saving commendation like 13 months into employment. That's pretty good. Good job.
That's amazing.
A, Halloween trick-or-treat hours are from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Saturday, October 31st, 2015. I don't think there's anything to add to that. No proclamations this evening. First public hearing. Public hearing for the Thunder Bay Chrysler Jeep Dodge Auto Expansion Brownfield Plan. And you and Mac are gonna...
Yeah, I started.
I'll just point out this real quick, because we've got two tonight. We've got a lot of people in the audience how these work. We'll open the public hearing. One person or another will come up and give their presentation. We'll open it to public comment, and that is when anyone from the public come up and comment on that topic only. We'll review any written comments to the office. I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have a, council will have a discussion and either take action or not. So that's kind of how they'll work if anyone is interested. So I'll open this one, and we have a report from Greg.
Okay. It's hard to see up there, so I'm going to go through this section very quickly. This shows where the project location is. It is Thunder Bay Chrysler Jeep Dodge Dealership, which is located on West Chisholm Street between Ninth and Tenth. These are the sites. There's actually multiple sites, one of which is the site of the old Mike's Hardware at the corner of Ninth and Chisholm. Then these two sites here are ones that are the existing car dealership. And then this over here is also part of, and has been for a number of years. The car dealership used to be, I think it's Worth Dry Cleaners in the past. And so all three sites are part of this project. They all qualify under the Brownfield, which I'll get into. Thunder Bay CJD is proposing to embark on an expansion of its current facility on Chisholm Street. The former Mike's Hardware has been purchased for additional vehicle display area, and a second-floor expansion of the current main building is also proposed. The property is currently owned by the dealership, the hardware site, the adjacent current main facility, and the property across the street, the former Worth Dry Cleaners, all qualify as eligible properties under the Brownfield Redevelopment Act. The Mike's Hardware was cited as functionally obsolete. The former Worth Dry Cleaner is, is it a part 201?
Yes.
Facility. We did work on it with a previous grant a number of years ago on that site. And then the balance of the site where the main dealership is located is adjacent to the other property, the Mike's Hardware, and therefore is eligible to be part of the Brownfield under the act as well as an adjacent property. As a result of that, a Brownfield plan was prepared by the property owner's consultant, Matt McClellan of Ottwell-Malby, and that was presented to the City of Alpena's Authority for Brownfield Redevelopment Board at a meeting on October 8th of this year. Following a presentation by Matt McClellan, the board voted four to nothing to adopt the resolution that is in your packet, approving the plan and forwarding it to council for its consideration at this public hearing. All taxing jurisdictions were notified of the public hearing via hand delivery or certified mail, and have the right to review the plan in the city clerk's office and comment either in writing or at the public hearing. A legal notice of the public hearing was also published in the Alpena News on October 9th. The Brownfield Plan utilizes a 10-year TIF, which is basically has become a standard for the city as far as term of plans, for TIF plans. The eligible activities include demolition, which has already occurred, and the Brownfield Authority was aware that it was going to occur prior to their approving the plan, which is permitted again under the act. But they did present that to the board, actually in September, their intent to do that, to get that done, to be able to move the project forward. Let it as best as abatement, which is within, also was within the Mike's Hardware building, 15% contingency, site work, interest, and then work plan development, review, review, and ABR administrative costs. The total cost for our eligible activities is $166,982. The total estimated tax capture, and this one is the first one that we've done this way, is we are not capturing school tax dollars. One that does require approval from the Mega Michigan Economic Growth Authority Board in Lansing, and it must go through the MEDC. Because this is not in downtown, they were not going to support the project. And it also would have added considerably to the timeline if we had involved the state in the project. So the determination by the stewards was that they would only ask for local capture, which means all the decision-making is made here by the Brownfield Authority and City Over the 10-year duration of the TIF, we're estimating around $182,000, just under $183,000 in tax capture. Any amount in excess of the cost of eligible activities will be deposited in the Authority's Site Remediation Fund for use on future projects. That's the fund that we used. We assisted in the purchase of the Beach Motel property in terms of doing the asbestos survey and other testing on that site, and we did that out of that fund to reduce costs for the city. If council concurs with the ABR's recommendations, staff requests upon completion of the public hearing and council deliberation that the following attached documents be approved. Resolution Number 2015-10, approving the Thunder Bay CJD Auto Expansion Brownfield TIF Plan, and the Standard Development Agreement outlining the responsibilities of all parties and the procedures for reimbursement. And you have both of those documents in your packet. Since the capture of the school taxes, which is 24 mils, is not included in the plan, as I said before, and no approval by the state mega boards required, consequently, the Brownfield Plan will immediately go into effect upon its adoption by council. Matt McClellan of Ottwell-Malby is here, as well as the stewards, so they can make any statement they wish, and I'll also be here to answer any questions you may have.
Did you... Yeah, I welcome you to come up.
Only say one quick thing, and then you turn it over to the stewards. Is that okay?
That'd be fine.
I'm Matt McClellan of Ottwell-Malby. I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with the City of Alpena for a long time and support the stewards. I just wanted to add that it's all based on the investment, the private investment that occurs as part of this property. Because the great part is we're not dealing with limited pie, we're expanding the pie of revenues here and helping to stimulate private investment, capturing those taxes. The only way that the stewards get repaid is if they make the investments on that property and then pay it out over that time. So it's a great tool to expand the pie of available revenues, and after those eligible activities are gone, those revenues come back into the local jurisdictions. So a pretty incredible tool and opportunity, so. And Greg, I think, covered everything. He's one of the most knowledgeable Brownfield folks in the state, actually from representing local governments, so you guys are real lucky to have him here. So I'll have Eric maybe talk a little bit about the project and what they do.
Thank you again, Greg, for all your assistance. I don't know where we'd be without you or Mac. Yeah, we're really excited. We're still in the tentative planning on exactly what we will be able to, you know, do to the building, but the intent is to put that second story over the service department, probably a couple more bays for oil changes, and just to beautify the side of that building. Now that Mike's is gone, you realize how bad it looks. You need some assistance, so. But we need the space as well, so. And again, thank you very much for all your help. Any questions I can answer for anybody, or?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I just, I don't know. Is there any other public comment on the topic, anyone other than Eric? I would just, I just have a statement that it's been, you know, from my involvement with the Brownfield and with Greg and you guys, it's been great to work with you, and you really kind of hung in there and...
Appreciate everybody's assistance.
Went through the whole, went through the whole thing, and it can seem pretty lengthy and complicated at times, so.
That it was. But it didn't end, so thank you again.
All right, appreciate it. Any written, anything on that? So we'll close public comment, close the public hearing, and up for council discussion. This is pretty much all I have.
Can't complain if a local business wants to invest and expand and help our downtown. I mean, it's not technically downtown, but no problem. May we approve Resolution 2015-10?
Second.
Noak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Then the second will be the approval of the Standard Development Agreement. Those are two second.
Right.
May we approve the Standard Development Agreement?
Second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Waldora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up is public input for proposed Long Lake Avenue-Johnson Street Truck Route.
Mr. Mayor, for that presentation, I just want to make council and yourself aware that I have a future possible conflict. I will be seeking legal counsel opinion on that, but I just want everyone on the council to be aware. I do have, it's a conflict, the owner of an adjacent property is the same as my employer, so.
Oh, for sure.
So I will be seeking an opinion going forward.
Do that before we even get started?
No, I think for tonight, the way I understood the agenda item is simply public input, so council would not be asked, other than a general consensus about moving forward with it. But as Mike described to me, there would be no specific vote tonight regarding the issue that he presented to me. So I don't think he has to accuse himself from the general input or the general consensus about going forward with the project at this point.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike. Thanks for bringing that up. So the presentation is the City Engineer, Rich Solinger.
We're here to discuss the potential bypass route for access between Long Lake Avenue and Johnson Street. The one thing I do want to hammer home before we start this is that all drawings and depictions shown here are preliminary and for presentation purposes only. Just think, I mean, it's going to shift some way, one way or another, but conceptually, this is the route that we want to take. I just don't want anybody to say, "But I saw it there." It's gospel now.
Yeah.
So this is our existing truck route, and as can be seen, there is the gap that exists between Long Lake Avenue and Balance and City, which basically requires routing up Long Lake to Hamilton and across to 23 to get back into the city. What we're proposing is a bypass route to interconnect the north section, north truck route area with Balance of the city, eliminating that need for trucks to go outside of the city to come back in and service the public, or to continue south and west on the state truck lines. What we're looking at is basically a connection immediately across from Commerce Drive on Long Lake Avenue, going back, running parallel and adjacent to the tracks. We would keep the road as close as possible to the tracks to avoid impacts to Wolverine And we have had some preliminary discussions with there. There are still issues that will need to be resolved. But that's kind of the purpose of this meeting, is we want to get council's input, have council here opinions from the public, so that we can make a decision, because we're going to start spending money as we move forward with legal services, surveys, et cetera. So we just wanted to make sure we had that public support moving forward. And listen, there are still issues that we will need to work out with Wolverine Industries. They've been very receptive, good to work with, but they also want to protect their future interests. Again, we would parallel railroad tracks as far as possible, and then we have to, we have to make a little bit of a swing down before we come into Johnson Street to try to get a 90-degree approach, so we'll be coming to that into Johnson Street at a 90-degree angle. We have, we've had discussions with a number of properties, we're working with, and this has really been a group effort. We've been working with Jim Clerich on some of the property along there. Jackie Krajcak has been basically our liaison between the trucking industry and the city staff, gathering input, getting some of the forms filled out, and she's provided some information that we will talk about during a minute. The intention is to keep the trucks, to keep this route as far back away from the residential areas along Long Lake as possible. We do not support trying to come down to the south side of Wolverine Industries and use Elm Street, because we are going to impact the residential neighbors there and on Long, you know, along Long Lake Avenue. So that is, it's not a project, portion of the project we want to pursue. We want it to stay back along the railroad tracks to make it as user-friendly for residents as well as the trucking industry. One of the questions that came up when this was originally discussed was concerns about the volume of trucks, the amount of traffic that's going to be generated in using this route that don't presently do. So Jackie did go out, solicit the various trucking industries, and basically came back with a number of somewhere in that 16 to 20 trucks per day, which would be using this that don't presently come out to Johnson Street.
Right. I was just gonna, just to make it clear, when we say trucks, we're talking about, you know, dump trucks, gravel trains, not UPS, small vans, that type of thing, because those are going to be going, you know, throughout the city anyways, and would probably, if it suits them and works well, they'll use it. But it's basically the large trucks that have been the issue regarding the truck route.
So they would be generating 16 to 20 trucks per day. In that peak times, summertime, typically when college is not in session, I mean, there's going to be some overlap in the spring and the fall. Wintertime, probably not going to see a lot of trucking activity along there to the extent that is identified here. But then you also have, you know, those 16 to 20 trucks that may be coming down this bypass route would have a decision when they hit Johnson Street. Do I go north? Do I go south? A lot of them may elect to go down to Ninth Avenue and then out to Chisholm, as opposed to going north up Johnson Street to 23. Those are things, I mean, right now, 60/40, 40/60, you know, 50/50. So we're just, right now, we're using a 50/50 split on as far as what we anticipate traffic to go. So, you know, that is basically the scenario that we have laid out tonight. It's not about funding, it's not about, you know, those are issues that we will have to come back to council for with our funding proposals, et cetera. Tonight is basically just to give input on the route itself, and if we should move forward with the project.
Getting all scraped. All right, I think we'll, if you want to answer questions.
All right, so that's the report. I'll open it up to public comment. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Hey, my name's Ryan Carpenter, and I live along the avenue.
Could you give your address, Ryan?
726.
Thank you.
The report, the presentation that Mr. Solinger just gave of 16 trucks a day in a brief that Mr. Keith Wallace, who used to be the city attorney, filed with the court, it said 100 to 120 trips per day. I mean, it's quite a span there, so I don't think 16 trucks a day is very feasible, but I live there, and I know what we were... The, the report, the presentation that Mr. Selinger just gave of 16 trucks a day in a brief that Mr. Keith Wallace, who used to be the city attorney, filed with the court. It said 100 to 120 trips per day. I mean, it's quite a span there, so I don't think 16 trucks a day is very feasible, but I live there, and I know what we were going through. I mean, I sat in the court and went all through. But if you can do a bypass, you know, that'd be, I'm willing to accept compromise, but going through residential area, I mean, there's bus stops there, and I don't think that's a good thing for anybody. I mean, we just had an accident on the truck route where they rolled over and a gentleman was killed there. You know, these things are dangerous. I can understand people wanting to go through the city, but it's just, you've got an $80,000 truck. I mean, they do a lot of, one truck does as much damage as 10,000 cars to the road surfaces, okay? And I don't want that kind of truck coming down the road in our neighborhood. My grandkids might be out there. I've got some pictures here, I'd like to show the council if you want to pass them around, won't yourself, if they come back. These are some damage that was done to my sidewalk, and this was done by a semi that missed a turn. Good old film, they stick. But he missed a turn, and I had followed the city ordinance about putting in new sidewalk, and that's, that's what happened. It wasn't totally cleared, and he cracked, cracked my concrete, I believe you're in there.
Yeah, I think, I think I.
Yeah. But. These are better. But I was wondering, just what part of the city ordinance? Is this going before the planning commission?
No, this is public input. This is bare bones right here. This is where we start.
Well, so it goes to the planning commission after you decide to have it, is that what goes on?
I think it's a planning commission issue.
Normally, streets have not been before the planning commission in the past, not certainly in my time with the planning commission.
But go ahead.
Yeah, well, I guess my point is, and I don't want to accuse anybody of anything, but the chamber, you know, sat down with a couple of truckers that wanted something for their dues, you know, understandably, and Mayor Walagora was in attendance, and I see Mr. Jett in the police. There were no residents that were offered to be there for input before this even got off the ground, so I understand that staff was directed to find a road through there. I mean, if it wouldn't have been that easy, the Glovey family wouldn't have fought it years ago to the tune of thousands of dollars. Now you want to come down Long Lake, that's not cricket.
We are not coming down Long Lake.
Well, that's why I'm up here. I'm against it if it's going to come through the residential area. This is, like Rich said, or Mr. Selinger said, this is tentative.
Well, in the city, and staff has, as Mr. Selinger said, and I support him 100%, is that from a staff perspective, if this proves to be unfeasible, we are not as staff in support of using Elm Street as the route, and we will not.
That's great. I'll tell you, I got a guy that comes every morning, about 5:30, and he's got a nice engine brake. Between 5:30 and quarter to 6:00, it goes off.
And those are the, just to keep it a bit limited, I don't want to have a lot of back and forth. I want you to be able to speak what you have. That's a great point. That is something that, that should be discussed. I can really appreciate the, the Jake Brake, or whatever you want to call it. So, Rick, that's the type of input that we're looking for, and, and I appreciate what you, what you've gotten to say because I don't want to get into my part, so I'll finish later, but go ahead and finish up.
What about the court decision, does that still hold any weight as far as, as far as going through the residential area?
I did want to clarify with you when that document, what the year was on the document that, that expected 100 to 125 trucks. What year was that Keith Wallace document?
I have it right here. It was filed June of 1998. You know, the beauty of these truck routes is they don't go as a crow flies. That's the beauty of them, none of them do. I mean, you infringe on people, and you bring in the city, pretty soon somebody says, "Well, let's just go across the Ninth Street bit, well, let's just go across there." You know, where's that stop? None of them go through the cities. That's, that's how they work. When this was first implemented, I don't know how many of you remember, I sat in the court, okay? When this was first implemented, there weren't going to be any. Now it's, oh, listen, let us in now. Only one person, one trucking concern, went against the truck route, one, and that was the Glovey Company. All the rest of the people that are out there now, they didn't go and file anything against it, try to get an injunction, and the city stood their ground and said, "You're not going to run our streets." Okay? I've got one more thing.
Okay.
It says here, "Private economic interest should never supersede the benefit of the public interest." And if this is going to come down Long Lake Avenue, the residential area interferes with our quality of life, if the tailgates leak, overload, whatever, I'm against it.
I appreciate.
Because I guess I'm going on record as being against it because of that. But if you can get around it where everybody is served, but everybody should be served, but it's not just a private concern between the people's quality of life.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming in, and I'm sure council does as well, Ron, in representing that.
Thank you, Ron.
Hello. So.
Who are you, please?
Jackie Krawcheck. It's K-R-A-D-N. I'm the present CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, but, and I don't usually do this because I'm not here as a resident, but I recently bought a house in the city, and so I'm proud to say my address is 2962 South Third. So I am representing our business community today, especially those impacted most by the changes to the truck route. Many of them are here today, but they're awfully shy when they're not working in their business, so I'm representing them today. And I would say that the proposed truck route that you see on the screen is actually a perfect compromise to a long-term problem. It was several years ago that I was approached by members of the business community to see if there was a way to solve this problem of the truck route. It was taking a considerable amount of time and money for trucking companies to travel south to north or north to south or west to north, however you want to look at that. It is not easy, and it's not cheap to run a business, and we should do all we can as a community to eliminate hurdles to running a business because these are the companies who keep our economy going. In discussions with the businesses and with the city, this particular proposed route, because we looked at several different ones, has come up again and again as the best possible solution to what we're facing between the residents and the businesses. It creates a much shorter route for the businesses, and it moves the trucks actually further away from the residential area. So it's a true compromise and a winning situation for everybody. We understand there's some potential concerns regarding the truck traffic going past the college. The college is also a member of the chamber, and so of course, we wouldn't want to do anything that would harm them. And in collecting, some of the numbers that I was collecting for Rich, I want you to keep a couple of these things in mind. Many of the companies in trucking are very seasonal in nature, so when you look at the numbers, they might be low, but that's an average. And so when you look at them, you know, doing a lot more trucking in the summer, that's going to affect the average. They, their busiest times are May through November, and that's typically the time that the college is not as busy, so that, that's definitely a key point to keep in mind. Not all the trucks will go past the college in my conversations. A lot of the companies indicated that about half of their trucks would use that route to go Ninth to Chisholm, and then to Eleventh to go south or west, and not actually turn past the college. And then also, in the conversations, not all truck traffic will use the new road. Some had specific reasons why they wouldn't use it for all of their trucking needs, and I won't get into what all those reasons were. But I'll tell you, it's been very clear to me over the past year while talking about this topic with the trucking companies, with the city, and I don't represent the residents, and so that's why they were not included in those discussions. The trucking companies will see an increase in efficiency, they'll spend less on fuel per trip, and they'll ultimately be able to invest those savings back into their business for expansion or back into the community in other ways. The companies are incredibly willing, and I know, you know, Greg and Matt are very familiar with this, to invest in this project if the investing mechanism fits what they're able to do, but they would love to see it become a reality. And the road will also open up that property for further economic development, so it's really inaccessible right now for certain potential businesses, and being that we also will represent the economic development organization, that's a very key point of this project. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today and to let us be involved in this. It's very important that the businesses do have a voice in this entire project, and I think that you'll agree that this is a need that definitely exists, and it's probably the best win-win situation for all the parties involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. Don McMaster. I'm appreciative of the opportunity to speak. I'm representing Alpine County Community College in my role there as president. I share Jackie's view on economic development for our region. I think it's important. Look to help the business and trucking industry however we can, and we're fine with it as long as they don't turn right when I get to Johnson Street. 16 semis is too many going past our, going down Johnson Street when we have 1,500 students a day going back and forth and staff across that street. So I'm against it.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Adrian MacArthur. I live 17295 M32 West. The truck route. I wasn't going to speak tonight, so I took down a couple of quick notes, but I do drive trucks. We are, we're very, very small in the trucking world. We have two. I pay $8,000 a year to license my trucks, which is a pretty good chunk of change. Costs about $41 per trip to go out and around. That would be any load going west or south from the quarry, Levy. I make, I gave the information to Jackie. Comes out to about one trip per day, what I haul. Roughly $6,800 a year that I spend going out and around. The, the big concerns tonight about safety, I actually find interesting because to go out and around, you wind your truck up to 50 miles an hour, out past all the businesses on US 23 North, and then make the turns, which one driver did miss this year. If he'd have missed it at 25 miles an hour, would have been a very different story where this, this road would all be low speed. I'd rather, rather go slow and miss something than really hurdle around a curb. As far as the college goes, if you're at college, you better learn how to cross the street. That's pretty blunt, but sending me out and around past, and the Hamilton Road is growing more and more houses on that all the time. There was another one went up last year. So it won't be long before people are complaining about us going out that way as well. The more you can spread the truck traffic out, the less complaints you're going to have. Mr. Carpenter, I have a question for you. Are you in favor of the road as proposed where it does not go past your house on Long Lake?
I'm willing to compromise.
You're, you do like that, if we can make that happen.
I don't like it.
Well, you're, you're in favor of a good compromise there. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. I think that covered the majority of my notes. Oh, one thing you can do for fun on the weekend is go get four or five cars together and pull them out onto US 23 South. Don't go over six mile an hour and see how many fingers you get, because that's what it's like pulling out every time.
Thank you, Adrian. Anyone else? Okay, any, I'll close up, uh, public comment, well, any written?
No.
I did receive an email from a resident. It was really choppy because it didn't, they didn't use the right address, so it was choppy, but it was written input just as well, and, uh, some of, some of the information she cited was a bit inaccurate as far as what we were working on, so I don't know if she's here or not, and apparently doesn't want to come up if she is, but it was a gal that, the main concern with her was the traffic that was going to be on Ninth, and that was addressed by somebody else, so we'll take that into consideration as well. No other written comment?
I did have one call today as well from a resident on Long Lake Avenue, basically asking about the truck route as it is, what's allowed, what isn't. I had a discussion with the chief, Jett, regarding that in terms of enforcement, and did invite the individual to attend tonight's meeting if they wish to either listen or to provide input. Do not know what the individual has attended enough.
Okay. Close public input and open it up to city, to council discussion. Rich, could you come back up just so you can click possibly back to that other slide for us from time to time? And there again, I guess just to start it off real brief, which I never am, but, but this is, this is in fact a true, how I would, I guess if there's a best way to do a project, this is probably very good, and hopefully the residents can respect the fact that we didn't start at the end and then give you the impression that we cared. We're starting at the very beginning, although there obviously have been a few meetings, which I have and haven't attended, but to get the preliminary details worked out. But this is the, really the first public input, and no real decisions have been made. This is really as close to the beginning as you'll get, other than coming in here and, and discussing everything that we did to get to this point. So I do kind of hope that people can appreciate the fact that, you know, we may talk a little bit about funding because if it's $10 million, of course, I doubt anybody's going to continue. So there might be a couple of questions, but you did provide some of that before, so, but we'll, I guess, stay off that major topic for right now, other than.
I'm, you know, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I can, I can come pretty close.
Yeah, and, and because everything isn't finished yet. Obviously, we're not done with it, but now, this is the, this is the truck route as it stands right now.
This is our existing truck route map. And as you, as you can see, I mean, when this was set up, we did come down south of Commerce Drive, and that was to accommodate, at that point in time, DG Trail, who was in Wolverine Industries' system, to allow them, their trucks to come down far enough to get into that end, and at that time, they were actively using the bays on the south end of that building. So we did set it up that far to that point. But it was never, you know, we, you know, there were some comments being, we talked about this a long time ago. Greg, you know, when he was city planner, had suggested this is a potential route. At that point in time, we couldn't get all the players together. We didn't have a project to bring it to, to make it viable. So now we're in a situation where we have a project. We can, you know, we've been able to pursue some funding to help offset it, but it, like you said, it is, it's really uncertainty. We've got, we have some commitments for some funding, you know, we've kind of looked at a route that we, we want to use, and this is, I said, you know, we're not in favor of coming out Elm Street, we're not in favor of going on Long Lake Avenue. Been there, done that, got the complaints to, to live by, so, you know, I don't want to do that. This is the, this is the best route possible to get that access between Commerce Drive and Johnson Street, fill that gap in between the truck routes, and minimize the impact to the residents, maximize the, the impact to the trucking industries. And I say trucking industries. This isn't just going to be trucks driving down here, you know, cars, you know, once it's a public road, it's going to be open for everybody's use, so it's not strictly going to be a semi truck route.
Anyone?
I'll go first. I'll be the bad guy. Yeah, I certainly agree that the chamber's point of view and everybody they represent and Mr. MacArthur's point of view. The existing truck route is certainly inconvenient for the trucking industry. It's certainly costly for the trucking industry. It's a pain in the butt. Okay, and you look at the map, it's really easy to pick up on that. I'd like to kind of go back to something Mr. Carpenter said, where this is a public interest versus private interest in a nutshell. If we're balancing convenience and cost versus safety, then I think we would pretty be pretty irresponsible to choose money and convenience over safety. To bring a truck route to the middle of a college campus where you have fifteen hundred, two thousand people cross that road day after day just seems like a bad idea. And those students change, and right now it's already an issue. Besides the safety aspect of it, I challenge anybody in the industry to find me another college campus that has a truck route go through the heart of it. Right through the middle of our campus. Half our campus is on one side, half the campus is on the other. I would be impressed if there was another few examples of a college allowed a truck route to go through the gut to have a college campus. We are a pedestrian campus. It is not... Where students drive back and forth. They walk, you know, to class. There's student life there. We have student housing there. Most of our students that are from out of town walk that route, not just to class, but into the community. You know, and certainly I understand everything that the trucking industry has argued, and I get that. But I don't like the conflict with the safety of, you know, a lot of young people that go across there. ACC is an economic driver in this community. It's a beautiful campus. This is not the best recruiting tool. Come visit our campus. Wait a second, let the, you know, three of these trucks go by before we cross this road. We don't have a... I say, we... Obviously, I work at the college, too. There's no dedicated crosswalk there. Even as it is now, when you stand on that road, you don't trust those cars to stop. You're already playing the game, and one of the reporters that was a student there is kind of nodding his head to that. That's not a game I want that many students to play on a daily basis just because it's cheaper, it's more convenient for somebody else. I do think there is some compromise there. I don't think the goal of the new truck route is to go through the campus. I think that's obviously not what they're after. If we could reroute them to go to the east, as Mr. McMaster pointed out, certainly the college would be pretty accepting of that. Maybe there's another compromise where the college could get a lights or dedicated crosswalk, something where we know these trucks are going to stop. Students understand, okay, this is where we can cross safely. I think that's a fair compromise. But certainly a lot of comments about trying to keep everybody happy and the residents and in the trucking industry, but I haven't heard a lot about keeping the college happy or keeping that a good place. And I agree with the mayor's comment. I think this is the probably the best trust route we can come up with, you know, other than what's there already. And certainly, you have the opportunity to maybe try to work through some of these bugs, but technically, the college is not on the cross... On the truck route. It just is we're dead in. So they are going to have to go east or west on Johnson. So I would just encourage throughout the process that we take a look at trying to find a compromise that's not going to jeopardize the safety of students semester after semester. And yes, the college is open in the summer. We still have students that live there. We still have classes. All our employees are still there. Certainly not as many, but it's still a factor. So certainly in favor of making things a little easier for truckers, certainly making it cheaper, but I don't feel good about rolling trucks through the middle of a college campus. Just one last quick note on that. There's a river on one side of that campus. There's woods on the other. There's trees. There's flowers. It's a beautiful spot. It just doesn't seem like the place to run the truck route through the middle of it.
Just a couple of... Michigan Tech, US-141, crossed it every day for...
Okay, all right.
Five years.
I asked, "Find me." There you go.
You did challenge him.
And actually, Sean, we did have some preliminary discussions with the college about improvements to that crosswalk. We've looked at some options for that. Matter of fact, this last weekend, I happened to be... And I didn't go to the football game, but I happened to be in Ann Arbor.
Hope you got out quick.
It was out on Friday, I know. But driving down through there, there was two... It was on Plymouth Road. Plymouth Drive, Plymouth Road. There's two crosswalks there. And LED flashing lights, overhead bar... I mean, there was some... You know, it's up to the students to know how to push the button to activate that, to tell the people that there is somebody that is going to use that crosswalk. But this is for four or five lanes. Why? And so, you know, I think there's some things that can be done to accommodate that. My mom always told me, "Don't step out in front of a truck." So, I mean, a little bit of common sense there as well for the pedestrian. I've gotten yelled at. Well, I had the right of... Yeah, but you could have been underneath the truck and, you know, having the right way as well. So I think there is some things that we can accommodate for that crosswalk if we do have that type of an issue. Whether we're going to have, you know, eight trucks or twenty trucks a day going that way, we already have some of the trucks. Busters trucks come out of there, delivery trucks come out of there. There are quite a few trucks that do travel Johnson Street on a regular basis and negotiate through that crosswalk, as well as the Dinerite buses and, you know, other businesses. It's going to be an increase, but I think that we can accommodate that with minimal... I won't say no impact, but with minimal impact.
Anyone else? Other than me? Zach and Wade?
Be my guest.
I'd like to... I guess I wish I could understand, I suppose, the future of where this road, what it could bring. I understand where the companies have come that would like the road, that used it a bit as a throughway at one time, sort of kind of where it all started and got a little bit, you know, got the momentum that it has now. But not always understanding, I guess, all the time where... What kind of traffic are we talking about? I don't think anybody can answer the question, because if you would have, I would have asked you, knowing that you would know the answer, especially with the college, and I really appreciate that Don is coming. Sean works there. I suppose with everything that's been brought up, because we made so many compromises that were in the right direction as far as that last residential block on Long Lake Avenue, and the other accommodations that we kind of worked together and made, the two issues that I guess I have at this point are the more traffic not only passed the college, I suppose, but even with that, you know, the point was brought up about an understanding of crosswalks and things, but even maybe taking a left at Twenty-three, once you get there, is a little bit difficult at times, but those things can be overcome with, you know, a green arrow for a left-hand turn and things like that, but knowing how many are going to... How many trucks are we talking about that are going to take this route from the south... From the north side, a town we'll call it? How many are going to take a right, and how many have been waiting for it so they can take a left? You know, I've talked to most of the guys that are here tonight as far as taking a left and making deliveries in town. I live on the south side on Saville Street, and if I call any one of those people, businesses on Long Lake Avenue, I'm like less than two miles from them, and they have to go fourteen miles to get to my house and back, because I understand it's seven miles, or is it fourteen one way? To go around Hamilton, I'm going to go out, and I think somebody pointed out that it was seven...
Fourteen miles round trip.
So I'm paying fourteen miles round trip for him to bring me my product for like two and a half miles of traffic. And I understand, we don't want... I mean, we're not going to accommodate having trucks coming, you know, through town just so I can pay less for my gravel, but... But the fact that on your last slide, where the trucks... Where the truck routes are now, they're going to be, when he goes... So he leaves Long Lake Road where his business is now, and he goes out Long Lake, down Hamilton, back in Twenty-three, there's a pretty good chance that, well, he's going to come down Twenty-three anyhow. So he's coming into town. He's going to take a left on Fourth or what have you to get to my place. But if he's going somewhere in the vicinity of... Oddly enough, you know, Clem's or something like that, he's going to come down. He's going to go past the college anyhow. So that's not going to be a change in the traffic, and he's going to take a left on the bridge and go across to Clem's Bay and tackle them. So a lot of these roads that we're talking about have an additional traffic on. They've already got that traffic on them now, so it's not really going to be additional. The additional traffic is going to be, it's a shorter distance if I suppose they're going to... They're going out Twenty-three, going south towards Osneek or anything, if I'm understanding it correctly, so... And there again, if they're going... If they're going south of town on Twenty-three, US-23 is an established truck route. We're not going to be able to do anything about that. So they're going to come across the new proposed path. They're going to take a left, come across Ninth, get on the truck route and go. So that's not going to be additional to the college, and they would have come through town anyhow to get back to the truck. So I really honestly appreciate a lot of the comments tonight, but I'm just not convinced, I guess, that it's going to be that much additional traffic on what we have now. I... And I'm not sure if anybody could say that it's not, that it is. I mean, I don't know. So that's, I guess, a bit of where my struggle is. I'm in a bit... I'm in the same situation as everybody else. I'm elected by the people, and so the residents say, you know, the residents that have approached me have said kind of what was what Ron Carpenter said, you know, "You're here, you know, for the residents," but without the businesses and without at least some kind of cooperation and support of them, how many residents are we going to have fifteen years from now? And I'm not saying this is a breaker and everybody's going to move out. It's not what I'm implying. I'm implying that I try to base my decisions on a cooperation between the business community and the residents, because if we don't have it, then then come next election time, I'm not business friendly, and so everybody's screaming at me to not run because I'm not business friendly and we don't have any jobs. So I'm trying to balance that a little bit in a rambling sort of way. Yeah, so there you go. But I... But so far with the progress that we've made and eliminating that section of that last residential section of Long Lake Avenue was huge to me, and I think that takes a big... A lot of the residential concern out. The traffic that we have at some of the other portions past the college with the crosswalk, we can help with that, the cross. I was actually under the impression a year ago when we started talking about this, that Van Leyer Hall really didn't have a lot of classes in it anymore. So I guess forgive me for not really appreciating how many people go back and forth, because I kind of thought Van Leyer was more of an office space than you're explaining that it is now, so I didn't know there was a lot of student walkabout back and forth, but... So you're going to see that I'll be in favor of at least continuing until we hit a financial roadblock that we can't overcome. But as far as continuing with the research, maybe I can suggest throwing some of those things down to gauge what kind of traffic we currently have between now and when this project gets off the ground. It may or may not be helpful. Might not tell us in the end, I guess, what we're going to get. It's just telling us what we got now.
Can you tell on a traffic counter if it's a truck?
The way we set them up, we set them up space ten feet apart, and we can... They actually have the capability of classifying them. We haven't had any recent counts out there, but I know we have taken counts on Johnson Street, and I know we can classify those. I can dig that information out as far as what we had at that point.
I think another part we need to make, which hasn't come out, is in terms of the timing, if this were to move ahead, is that construction is not anticipated until 2017. We're not looking at it like it's going to occur next spring or anything of that sort. By the time we go through the process and everything that we need to do, if the project were to move ahead, it would not be... It would probably get let sometime during the winter of early 2017 with, you know, award in that spring and construction at some point there, assuming we put all the pieces together.
Well, and that gives us the ability to fund it over two fiscal years, which we definitely need to.
And perhaps put a little aside, you know, before that. Just in looking at the map, too, any trucks coming down using this bypass, why don't you put that on the map in purport, whatever it was? To go... If you go... Most of the that I see that would go right towards the college are going to be going for two reasons. One, either to go right on across Long Rapids Road, down Bagley to get to Thirty-two. And I see a lot of trucks coming the other way back, doing exactly that of going off Thirty-two up north on Bagley to hit Long Rapids, and they head out. Because that would be very direct, perhaps even easier than going ninth to Chisholm, Eleventh, and around to get out. The other would be is if they need to go probably north to some of the businesses, somewhere between Hamilton Road and probably south of the industrial park and down to Chisholm. So let's say if they had to go to the car dealership or to some other, you know, business up there, it may make sense to do that rather than going up and around. So I think there's limited in terms of where they're going to go. If they're going to... If it's any farther north, it makes more sense just to go north up Long Lake Avenue to Hamilton, because you're already up there. And if you are going to go out state, you know, Chisholm to state, it makes more sense to go to Ninth Avenue and then head south that way. You could go with, you know, also down Ripley. You've got six and one-half dozen another as far as which way you want to go once you hit. Because of the fact that you don't have any dedicated left signals at Johnson and Chisholm, maybe those could come in the future, but a lot of those trucks, I think, if they're going that way, are either going to go straight, or they don't have to worry about a left, or they're going to go north to the, what, few destinations they may have up in there. That's just my thought. But again, a lot of it you aren't going to know for sure until a route is in place. I mean, you can't totally predict. But, you know, when we did have our meeting with the college at that time, Dr. Jointen and with Don, you know, we did look at crossing equipment and that, and would certainly be open to looking at that further. And I don't know what would be the best if it was just a signal that in essence had a green light, you know, had green, yellow, red, and so then, you know, you cross when it's the traffic's red, and I don't know if they do that, or if it's only going to be actuated when somebody... Because depending upon the time, it could be constantly actuated to the point if you were in between classes to where any vehicle, whether they're cars or trucks, could be... Begin to get stacked up because of constant pedestrian crossing over a period of time.
You know, it's been very... I travel that route two or three times a day down Johnson Street. And you'll see, the motor vehicles driving down there, you'll see all of them, but a lot of them will look. They'll see the pedestrians coming out, and they'll slow down. Same token, you know, if the pedestrian comes out there and there's a line of cars, the pedestrian will typically stop and wait for the traffic to clear. So, I mean, it's that blend of the mix of pedestrians and the motor vehicles. I see a lot of people slowing down, letting those pedestrians go across, you know, when I do travel that. So I don't... I guess I don't think we're going to have the problems with Adrian MacArthur driving his dump truck down through there and say, "Aha, pedestrian. I can hit him now." He's going to slow down to allow those pedestrians to cross. And again, I think we could put in some type of an actuated signal that flashes a yellow, warning that there are pedestrians in the crosswalk, be prepared to stop. So those are things that we can accommodate. Sorry, Adrian. Sorry, Adrian.
Hi, Sid, well, we've been working on the Woodward Trailhead here two weeks now, I think, week and a half. We've been going through every day with a truck, four or five trips. Haven't hit anybody yet.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
Yeah, why'd you put yet at the end of that?
You said you've been fast enough.
Yeah, it, um, it, it makes for interesting, um, you know, and then you say, okay, well, you know, we have a, one of those pedestrian over the, over bridges to walk on, you know, big ACC thing, you know, sign on it, rather than flashing lights and whatnot, but I don't know, you know, I don't know where those, I don't know who builds those or who takes care of that kinda thing, but that might be, um, a project as well. I don't know that much about those or whether.
Unless, unless you can fence barricade them in both directions. Let's, let's face it, people are typically lazy, they're not gonna walk up, go across, walk back down.
I suppose. Yeah, I suppose, yeah.
And then you have the issue of those who are handicapped unless you have a humongous ramp.
Yeah, I don't know.
In order to accommodate getting up there.
Could you see those, but I don't know, maybe their grandfather did.
You know, it's, it's, it's not gonna accommodate that, uh, those individuals, so. Yeah, it becomes difficult. If, if anything, what would be what you, I have seen in other places, but I don't know that it's practically at all, especially 'cause we've probably got too many pipes, is they go under, you know, with a, you know, where they can have a gradual slope and actually have a tunnel where you go under the road rather than, than over, but I think there are probably a number of obstacles as well as cost to that.
Something, isn't it?
Just blasting through the rock might be a challenge in itself, and keeping it dry.
Everybody have anything else?
Well, I'm in favor of moving forward as long as we take in the safety condition at the college, as long as we look at that. And will we have a designated goose crossing?
Okay.
Goose crossing, was that?
They live at the college too.
They do.
We can get those.
And I just, you know, I want counsel to, rest assured, I mean, even if you, if you say, let's move forward, investigate it, there are still a number of stumbling blocks that we have to overcome. Just one of them is the funding, and we still have to work with all the property owners along there. We're, we're awaiting some information from DEQ on some ground conditions out there.
There are definitely environmental issues all along there, and, uh, and the, and the DEQ on their own, I don't know what, for what reason, they've been doing a lot of testing. We should have preliminary, uh, data by, hopefully within the thirty days. And then they're gonna be doing, uh, additional testing, uh, here during the next thirty or so days, which will add some more data, which we will have to take into account in terms of what is under the, where the road is going. Because if we're putting in water, sewer as well, which is part of this, it isn't just the road, you know, what may we be running into when we dig?
Like I said, you know, there, there, like I said, there's a number of roadblocks, and we're, we're gonna be back before council a number of times with this information as we, as we start working through it. We did get, we did get a grant. If everything goes south on us, doesn't mean we, we're committed to taking it.
I guess speaking of water and sewer, just so we cover all the bases so everybody understands all the details now, of course you wanna put water and sewer in so you don't have to come back and do it later for any development that happens in there.
Actually, we're gonna be replaced. Right now, there is a water main that runs, um, along the railroad tracks between Johnson and Long Lake. We will be replacing that, it's an old cast iron, undersized, um, to meet the needs. So we will be replacing that the full length. Sanitary sewer, we would only be, we'll basically be replacing it up to just past, uh, the brewery. So sanitary sewer's not going all the way, it's just replacing, 'cause right now sanitary sewer does go up to the brewery, we'll be replacing it up that far. But the water being low all the way to Long Lake.
Yeah, by going to the, if you go to the other slide again of the route, by going just to the, uh, north end of the, uh, brewery property, that will also then provide sewer access to where it says Brush Creek LLC, so that they could, you know, tap into sewer as well.
Oh, okay.
We don't need to go any further north, Wolverine already has that, so it would just be that property to the south of that.
Okay, and the property over here, which, uh, is not labeled, but it is a separate parcel of property.
Right.
That way, water and sewer could be extended via this, this, uh, narrow easement through here, over to service, those other properties.
Rich, can you just point out the soccer fields?
Soccer fields are down at the south end, down here.
So this is a little further away from those fields than like the original idea a long time ago, isn't it?
The original concept was basically use that existing, the same route as that existing paved road, which you put it right next to the soccer fields. This shove, shove, shuffles them over and away from the soccer fields.
Anything else? Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much. I don't see, uh, we've consulted discussion, and I believe, if I saw it on something, that just the only action would be, would it be Karen, would you prefer an actual vote, I guess, to, to move forward, whether we move forward or not, or?
No, I thought we were just looking for a consensus about whether the, whether they should continue to investigate and. Why, why is it some understanding that you're on board with that though? Because there'd be a lot of staff time invested in, uh, doing that.
You don't want us to tell you after the fact?
We just do not spend that time if, if, if the feeling is not to move.
Yeah.
You know, to continue to move forward, otherwise we, we certainly will, we'll put the time and effort, and as Rich said, there will be some expense, uh, involved in that as well, with surveys and some other things.
And I know, I guess Cindy and I clearly stated that we would support at least moving on for the next step where everybody else is at. Susan, okay? Mike, okay? John, sure? Okay. Is that well?
That's good. We have our arching.
Arching orders, yes.
Arch. All right, thank you, and thank you to the chamber and the businesses for showing up and, and for the residents and Ron for showing up. Appreciate that, kinda helps us along for sure. Next up, report of officers, we have bids, public safety facility roof and soffit repair replacement project.
Before I speak on the, uh, public safety facility roof, I just wanted to bring counsel up to date on where we're at with the HVAC system. Uh, the condensing unit, air conditioning units are set in place, they're piped in, they're hooked up into our air handlers. We're still in the off position because we were waiting on the control package to get installed, which they're working on right now, uh, before, because everything has to be started up in unison. So Control Solutions is on site right now, they're installing a lot of the new controls. The workmanship has been, you know, superb, I've been real pleased with the workmanship from the welding of the, uh, pipe fittings to, uh, the safety conscientiousness of the workers that are there, um, as well as the communications have been real well. I've been at public safety quite a bit back and forth, in fact, uh, one of the paramedics made a comment to me that, you know, we're gonna have to get you a uniform very quick, and, and he meant it in a good way, and, uh, there isn't, there, you know, I can say that I'm really blessed in the fact that I don't think there's any one of the employees that work for the city of El Pina that I wouldn't roll my sleeve up and work next to. And, and it is a true honor to say that, so. But at any rate, um, it's, it's, and some of the stuff that's happening, uh, the way some of the controls that were installed and that, were difficult to get to, were not really installed in the best of manner to, to function properly. And as these new controls are going in and that, they're thinking outside of the box and taking the initiative to put them in a user-friendly manner, making them, you know, and it's, it's exciting to see how this whole thing's going. I was there today to take pictures, uh, because we have applied for an incentive program which we have qualified for. We've qualified for two thousand, at this point, two thousand two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents in incentives for the upgrades. And I'm, and I'm confident we're gonna see substantial savings along the way in, in our energy bills. But any rate, uh, there was a pile of wiring and stuff laying on the floor there, and a bunch of metal pieces and stuff, and it's phenomenal to see the old stuff that's coming out, the new stuff that's going in. If you just think about computer phone technology, what it was twenty years ago to where we're at with controls, it's just amazing. But any rate, um, I just wanted to bring counsel up to date on that. I also want to publicly thank, uh, those that occupy the, the public safety building, um, worked there and occupy it. It was, the cart was in front of the horse in this particular with the air conditioning and stuff, and I know that they've had, they probably have some uncomfortable days or uncomfortable nights there, and they were real good about it, stuck it through, and knew that the goal was, we were getting towards the goal. So I really appreciate them being patient through this whole project, especially since, you know, in mind the position. So, or added to my new position. So does counsel have any questions as far as the HVAC? On October twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, bids are open for the public safety facility roof soffit and repair replacement project. The scope, the job scope consisted of repairs to the existing standing seam roof panels, hip and ridge caps, replacement of the roofing over flat areas of the building, repair replacement of the grain gutter system, including downspouts, installation of a snow retention system on the standing seam metal roof, repairs to the roof drain piping system, installation of ice melt heat cable and various caulking and sealing. Currently, the standing seam roof is leaking in various areas of the building resulting in damage to insulation and ceiling tiles. Areas of the gutter system are damaged, ineffective, and diverting water against the building resulting in additional damage. The roof drain system travels through unconditioned, not heated areas before entering the building drainage system. With winter freezing, the pipes have disconnected or broken, and water drains into the so, soffit system resulting in damage to that soffit system and the soffit system lighting. One bid was received from Meridian Contracting Services totaling one hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Funding for this project was intended to come from the Public Safety Construction Fund, however, the estimated balance in the fund is eighty-four thousand eight hundred and eight, eight, eighty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. And speaking with Meridian Contracting Service and reviewing the highest priority items, we were able to agree on items that could be replaced in future budget budgets. It is my recommendation as assistant city building official that the city council award the roof project, less the flat roof replacement and soffit repair replacement to Meridian Contracting for eighty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Funds to come from the Public Safety Building Construction Fund and the balance from the Public Safety Police Fire and Ambulance Building Maintenance Budget and the General Fund.
Okay, just to add a couple of things, um, when Mike talked to me about this, obviously this will wipe out the Public Safety Building Fund, it will be there no more. And we knew eventually at some point in time that was gonna happen. But the repairs are absolutely necessary. I did ask about the soffit and the flat roof. I think the soffit was something between eleven, twelve thousand four and about thirty-two or so for the flat roof. I did ask that Mike sit down with, uh, probably Rich, Joel, and Bill, Bill, to look at those and whether, I mean, if we go over and just use that now and then wait till next budget year, budget money, then to do those other items. And I was especially thinking of the soffit at about twelve thousand. Is it gonna be more because now they gotta come back when they're already there, I don't know? And is it good to make all these repairs, but we still leave the soffit wide open all throughout the winter? Would it make more sense whether we budget the, take the money out of the, the, uh, the extra money out of the fund balance now, or we budget it next year? You know, one or the other, and what would make the most sense? So I've asked them to sit down, talk about it, and then get with me, and if our feeling as staff was that it would still be better to do it now, then we would come back to you with a possible amendment to the contract. If it was felt it could wait and it would be best to, then that's what we'll do. We could also look at the flat roof, it's considerably more, but again, I don't know if it makes more sense to do it while we're there and let's finish the project even if it means taking the money out of, uh, fund balance. And, and I obviously can't be involved in that because anything where we're taking money out of fund balance is, is gonna, she's gonna have a lot of say too, and should, and, and I lean on that, uh, in making decisions. But right now, what Mike's asking is just for that, the, the eighty-four, to take care of bulk of it. We'll have some more internal discussions, and then if we feel we do wanna move ahead, we'll come back and, and ask for your decision on that, which you can, you know, decide either way. But I wanna let you know that at least we're, we're gonna look at those other, uh, parts of this project as well.
The, the areas of some of the flat roofs, um, it's of the vintage that they, it's gonna be in need of replacement. The, the one area, the, the actual seam is, is lifted, and I talked to Meridian, and we're talking about that we can re-adhesive that down and, and buy a little time on that flat roof system. Another portion of the flat roof system over top of the bay area has a couple of rooftop units on it, they're no longer used. The initial plan for me, this engineering was to try to repurpose those for ventilation and some other air handling issues. But we've discovered that they're antiquated enough or they're not gonna be usable enough, and they're pretty massive units. We're gonna need a crane to take them off of that rooftop. And at that point in time, we're gonna need to fix the roof. So the concept is, is let's see if there's maybe a market for these things, get them off of there. And then when we get ready to do the roof, we can do the roof as one project instead of fix, redoing that flat roof, and then later taking those units off and having to have them come back and then patch the roof again. You know, work against, the less seams, the less joints we have, the better job we're gonna have overall. So we felt we could buy a little time on the flat roof, but also understanding that, you know, there's no guarantee what the price might be next year, you know, just on that part, portion of it.
But still needing to do a, a repair to the seams currently 'cause they are leak.
Correct, we do need to do some repairs on it, and, um, in talking to Meridian, uh, we can get the adhesive and, there was conversation that, you know, I would strap my boots on and basically it wouldn't be any additional cost, we'd just go up and do the repairs on it and, and buy the time, you know. It's not leaking over the bay area that we're, that we're aware of, we've got more leaks along where, you know, roof areas meet, uh, walls and along those, those hip areas and ridge areas. For the most part, the bulk of that flat roof, I mean, the bulk of the standing seam roof is in real good shape. But we can't repair gutters and stuff like that without doing our snow management system, it's just a, you know, one thing's dependent on the other. The soffit system that we're looking at doing right now is it's a sealed stucco finish soffit system. We're looking at doing a metal, uh, with access hatches every eight feet, so we have access to the soffit areas. Currently, the only access we have to the soffit areas is what's fallen off already because of all the rain. Or I mean, because of all the water damage.
So we'll at least look at it, and maybe we won't come back with any recommendation to do anything right away, or it could be just part, as Mike says, you know, the, the roof, the, the flat roof is a much bigger project, but we can still look at the soffit to see whether there's gonna be any harm in waiting around. 'Cause that's my only concern, is we do all this work and still leave these open exposed soffits, is that a problem or not? If it isn't, then fine.
Mike, what was the feedback from the people that did not bid? Were you in contact with anyone that was not able to place a bid, or have you had any feedback from them at all? You know, I'm trying to understand exactly why we only had one on a sizable project like this.
No, I was, I did not contact any of the other bidders to find out why they weren't interested in bidding on it. I know some of the contractors personally are really heavy, they're, they're pretty busy right now. I know that one of the concerns that, uh, Meridian had, that we had, you know, conversation on that, he felt that, uh, we should make perfectly clear, you know, at the pre-bid walkthrough was warranty. You know, there's, you know, we're, we're working on areas that are existing, that we believe we've got the right fix for it, but, you know, if there seems to be an issue, are we gonna hold them to the, you know, are we gonna hold them to the repairs where they're gonna have a cost, a lot of cost involved in repairs because we didn't quite get it right? And so, you know, I said, you know, with the flat roof, that should stand for itself because it's, you know, it's a membrane, it's a membrane roof and a warranty will go with it. But, um, so that might have been some of the concern, but I, I didn't get any feedback. There was one other bidder, um, that did come up, pick, uh, pick up a. There was one other bidder that did come up, pick up a bid packet, it was Lumsden Builders, picked it up on the day of the pre-bid walkthrough and Rich had told them that we were currently at the pre-bid walkthrough and that, you know, to get over there and stuff and then we never seen them, and I don't know if he made any kind of new rich or...
No, he picked up the plant site and dispatched that day, didn't download before. He was looking at him as he walked out the door and obviously decided it wasn't something that he was interested in.
And it was a mandatory walkthrough, correct?
Yes, it was a mandatory walkthrough, but Mike, Mike hit the nail on the head in that even Todd, Meridian Contracting was very reluctant to do this, to bid it. He did, and I'm, I'll probably get the wrong building, but he did some repairs rough at St. Anne's. He now owns the repairs and that leak. And that's, that's one of the concerns, is if, if he does the work, he's gonna own that leak if he comes back, you know, in the future. So, and that's a, that's a very legitimate concern for, for the contractors. We, Mike did, talked to a lot of, a lot of the contractors, we sent it out to, the list was, was in there who we sent it to. I think it's not, it's not a big moneymaker for it, there's a lot of time-consuming work and not fast money.
It's an extraordinary building and I guess, I don't know that anybody, to my knowledge, outside of Meridian has been, has toured it as extensively as he has. He did the recommendation of sort, and I think he was the only one that bid on coming to us and doing the walk, the preliminary walkthrough to see what was wrong with it. I can appreciate the fact of trying to get as much done as possible, so, you know, if that's, if that's feasible in the process to get, to get the rest of the stuff fixed and if Karen is, you know, wants to bring that back for coming out of the fund balance, I guess it's gonna, it's gonna come from somewhere at some point to get it fixed, so...
We talked a little bit about it, so Mike will kind of take a look at everything and then decide what we need to do.
Okay.
And then Chief Ford, we're from Chief Jet, you know, I kept them in the loop of what's going on and that and, you know, so now I'm talking more with that, I've been trying to keep them up to date with everything that's going on. I know they occupy the building, but I'm, you know, back and forth and, as well as their, you know, the deputies, so...
Yeah, I appreciate how hands-on you are with it. You know, you're hands-on, you're there and you're knowledgeable, you haven't just turned loose, not that you would, but, or anybody would, but you didn't just turn loose a contractor and then get his report when you were done, it sounds like you've been right there the whole time.
Yeah, I've been there before this project, we did some, I did some walk, you know, with Bob Adrian and as well as Todd from Meridian, right, I spent some time up on the roof with him, looked at some of the stuff and shaking our, shaking my head as well and so, and the building needs, the building needs a lot of work, there's lots of other things that need attention on it that we need to move forward. You know, a lot of people, you know, like with us in the outline area refer to as the fire station, here they refer to the firehouse because it's where they live, I mean, as well as the law enforcement occupying it, so there's a lot of pride in the building and we need to bring it back to our staffs, so...
How do you want that? As far as awarding the bid?
Right now, we'd ask at the amount that...
Eighty-five, sixty-eight.
Yeah, the eight.
Eighty-four, eighty-nine, eighty?
Eighty-five, six-thirty-eight. Eighty-five, six-thirty-eight.
Oh, that's...
That's what we ask for the approval, for the awarding of the contract.
I move we approve, yeah, we at that point. Contract with Meridian Contract for eighty-five, six-thirty-eight. Funds come from the Public Safety Building Construction Fund and the balance from the Public Safety Police Fire and Ambulance Fund.
Paulagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Paulagora?
Hi. Next up, unfinished business resolution.
No, I said Jess.
Oh, are we okay?
Yeah, she's...
Did I say no? I didn't have to say no.
Resolution number 2015-11, redevelopment ready communities commitment. Adam?
City of Alpena has been working with the redevelopment ready community program for over a year. On October 5th, staff from the RRC program presented the reported findings for the city of Alpena. The RRC program now requires a resolution from the, of the city's commitment to meet their recommended best practices and work towards RRC certification. This program appears to be beneficial for the city and that continuing to work to meet their best practices, which attempt to maximize transparency, citizen participation and consistency would be in the best interest of the city and its citizens. With the approval, with the approval of the attached resolution, the city would commit to working towards meeting the RRC best practice and working towards the RRC certification.
Yeah, as simple as that.
It's like a good group of people to work with.
I might put a technical, so...
I make a motion to pass resolution 2015-11.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Paulagora?
Hi. Thank you, Adam, and counsel. Next up, second amendment to the recycling, to the recycling interlocal agreement.
It's me again. This is kind of unlike herding cats, but hopefully this is the last time because I'm determined. There were a few things that they wanted eliminated from the one that we passed before, most of it was the expiration date, was still at 2018 and a couple of the articles. This eliminates all of that and this is the one that everyone is passing with the same language, so this will be the last time I bring it.
It also eliminates the auto renewal as well, which was left in because we weren't told to eliminate that.
So... It's the need just for public clarifications, basically very small housekeeping details?
Yes, it is. It's, we've already, we've already approved the opt-out date, which the 21st was already what we had, the $20 increase on the surcharge and it expires next November. But nothing on that has changed.
So I guess the only question I had, and I hope that you know, but maybe not, so we've eliminated the auto renewal for three subsequent years and now it basically says this agreement shall be effective December 1st, 2010 through November 30th, 2016. Where will we be a year from now? What will we be doing a year from now with this terminated?
Well, there are many things that we're looking at and working towards, so we're kind of in beginning stages of many things. Now, the county has formed at their last meeting a recycling committee of their own. We have asked them to come to our meeting and to pick a date, come and have a joint meeting so that we talk about what their goals are, what our goals are, so that we're working together and not against each other. But one of the main reasons that the county has formed a recycling committee is because there's talk that if you don't have county-wide recycling, because of the governor's initiative on recycling, that you could lose a large portion of your revenue sharing. So it's in everyone's best interest that we have county-wide recycling. That's why they formed a committee, because that will probably pass. So another thing that the board itself is doing outside of, outside of the county commissioners is we are actually looking at forming an authority and we're in the final stages of getting the language of that down. If we form an authority, every township, including the city, will have a place at the table. That's not how it works right now, there's two from the city, two from the township and then one, two more from outlying townships and it's kind of, you know, it's not that they don't have a say because they can come, but if we form an authority, the authority will have the ability to apply for low interest or no interest loans so that we can get a facility that is, that people should, safe for people to work in. They have no heat, they have houses in, you know, Portage John in the wintertime because the plumbing freezes, and the facility isn't big enough to take what we are bringing in. We need to upgrade it, we need to automate it so that we can grow our system, bring in more dollars from what we sell on the market, do it more efficiently, and an authority gives us the ability to do that. It's one of the reasons that we're heading in that direction. We've also had discussions about maybe the surcharge, right now we can't charge businesses because under the law, the one that we operate on, it can only charge residents, the surcharge. Businesses use the facility, they're, they're big users of the facility and it's not that we don't, we want people to recycle, but we can't charge them, so it, they do it kind of...
For free.
And you can't stop them from doing it. I mean, we don't have the means to monitor the bins, we just simply don't. So if there's talk about maybe putting it to the vote of the people, if they pass recycling, then we can include businesses, then they would have, we can put them on the tax bill and they would have to pay too. As a board right now, we're kind of looking at instituting, because we have no dollars, I'm telling you, we are operating in the red, we have no money. We will not have dollars even after this goes into effect until February. So we will have to borrow money to make it to that point, to meet payroll, et cetera. But the board is looking at instituting a policy ourselves about encouraging businesses to buy card, say, you know, $50 a year and you can recycle all the cardboard, all your materials that you want in the bins. That way, at least we get some dollars coming in for, for what they are putting in the bin. We also got an education grant, there's four, I was on the way today for quite a few hours on that, because I'm on that committee too, but we, the state only has $500,000 allotted this year for recycling. Not a lot of money for statewide, but four counties, we've captured $50,000 of that for education. So in Alpena, I don't know if anyone's aware, but education on recycling is, it doesn't exist. It's not on the city website, we have no materials out there. So if we can educate people on what they can put in the bins, and as we get better at this, we can take more, but for now, what we can put in the bins, we can send out informational things to encourage people to recycle, what they can put in the bins, because when they put things in the bins that don't belong in the bins, then we have to pay, we have to pay taxpayers to have that hold away to the landfill because it's garbage, we can't recycle it. So education is a big, big piece of Alpena's recycling and we're, we are working on that and we will have materials, handouts, mailers, the bins will be remarked with easy, easy, if you look at them now, they're faded, you can hardly tell, a lot of the things that are on the bins, like they'll take on pop, you know, like boxes from pop containers, beer containers, they'll take those now, but on the bins, it says that they don't take them. So there's a lot of information, we currently have on our own bins that is incorrect. So in the next, hopefully in the next six months, we will rectify a lot of that and we will really push education, that will help us save dollars too, what we have to spend to have... So as a group, we are doing many things. Where we will be next November, we're working on that. We, we just have to kind of see, but we are working in a direction.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I'm glad you had an answer because it kind of just shot that at you without a warning, so...
No.
That was, yeah, that's a great answer because I wondered what, you know, whether we would just be, whether there was a plan, so it's great to hear that there's a plan.
I did have a comment for Cindy. Not so many years ago, Alpena Community, Alpena High School, a group of people there had tons and tons and tons of educational material for everybody, not just for students at, at the high school, so my first thought was maybe they have some of it left over.
Okay, I'll have to check into that. And since we have very little material out there, the way that we're starting, and I don't have it with me, but we are starting as basic as you can for recycling, because we don't want to overwhelm people, we want to get them to start, and then we'll move to phase two where we actually have material that has a little bit more detail, but we will have a website, we will have a website that will direct people, so if they have a question, can, can I recycle a matchbox? Okay, let me go and see if I can. There'll be a place where they can actually go and get that information long before we have it in paper form. So we, it's, it's, it's going to come together in the next few months.
I'm hoping there'll be a lot of information for the public schools because you haven't been hounded about recycling until your kids say you can't do that.
And, and that is our hope.
Might be very helpful.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
That's it.
Excellent. Thanks.
We have to adopt it.
Yeah. Still want to get it.
Anyone like to do that?
I move we approve the second amended interlocal government, local government agreement.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Paulagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
I move we adjourn.
Sexton.
You are watching All About Alpena.